Robert Kraus. Jason Blair. Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts. Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held November 4th, 2013. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013, 2014 in the amount of $2,116,924. Here you have a motion.
Motion approved.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on these items? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider approval of a lot split in the northeast quarter of Section 25, Township 10 North, Range 3 West, being west of Bryant and south of Southeast 4th Street. Application by Dr. Richard Holmesy.
Mayor and Council, this application for a lot split is located on an existing office complex on Southeast 4th Street. It's located just west of the Highland East Junior High. And this application is for a separate lot for Dr. Holmesy to build a new dentist office. They will be using the same approach to Southeast 4th Street, so an access easement must be filed at Cleveland County before the building permit will be issued. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Thank you, both. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number four is consider approval of a revocable permit for a gas company canopy located on Lot 1A of Shops at Moore addition, being south of Southwest 19th Street and east of Broadway. Application by Sam's Real Estate Business Trust.
Mayor and Council, items number four and five on your agenda are companion items. Sam's Club is looking at the old convergence building for a new facility, and they would be installing a gas pump to the south, south of 19th Street, just across from Jimmy John's, where Jimmy John's currently is. They are requesting two revocable permits. One would be for encroaching upon the airspace of a utility easement with a portion of the gas pump canopy. The other revocable permit application is for a fiber optic line to be located in the southwest 19th Street, right-of-way, in order for the Sam's Club operation to communicate with the gas, the gas location. Staff has reviewed both of these permits in relation to how it would affect the city utilities and infrastructure, and we do see no real adverse effects to this. We would recommend approval of both revocable permits. These are filed at county, and the revocable permits do allow, in the language of the permit, for the City of Moore to revoke their right to be in our easements or right-of-way if we need to use them for other purposes.
Where are they wanting to put the pumps? In the parking lot?
Right, there is a very small lot at the Shops at Moore that is just south of 19th Street, where the Broadway intersection is. So it would be across the drive aisle from Jimmy John's to the, to the east.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
We've seen the site plan, and it does fit in there, believe it or not, but there is a small lot there, but it'll be for their gas pumps over there, will be across the road.
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you, thank you, both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a revocable permit for a fiber optic line to be located within the southwest 19th Street, right-of-way. Application by Sam's Real Estate Business Trust.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. They didn't want us to, to talk about them coming to town, but it's hard to do when it's on the agenda, so there they are. Item number six is consider awarding bid number 1314-003, purchase of courtroom furniture for the court facility in the new City of Moore Public Safety Building to Solid Rock Church Furniture in the amount of $29,925.40.
Mayor and Council, this agenda, just as it is listed here, is for courtroom furniture, and this is the low bid, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Hi, Dave.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider awarding bid number 1314-004A, purchase and installation of consoles for the operation in a 24/7 mission-critical environment in the new City of Moore Public Safety Building to the lowest and most responsible bidder.
Mayor and Council, we opened bids on November 15. We had four companies submit bids. Of those four, one company didn't meet all of our requirements. Another company came in considerably higher, and there's nothing that sets them apart to justify the higher cost. That left our two bids with ZYBEX Systems out of Littleton, Colorado, and Stoltz Telecom doing businesses in business systems out of Oklahoma City. The low bid on those came in with ZYBEX at $95,058.40. There's currently $216,251 cash available in our 911 fund, which we plan on using to cover the cost of these dispatch consoles. And we're just requesting that that be approved, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I guess I have a question, okay. I noticed that the travel expenses on here are $120 bucks an hour for Littleton, Colorado, and this other one is in Oklahoma City, and they don't have a fee. It's $12,000 difference in cost. How many times do they have to come here to set it up and all that? How many hundred and twenty dollars are we going to be paying on the cheaper bid when it's included in the other one? It appears to be, I don't know if it's included or not.
Yeah, I think the $120 per hour, if I'm not mistaken, is the cost that would be outside of any warranty coverage.
Okay.
So I, I believe all costs are covered under the warranty, which is good for five years, and after that five years, it'd be $120 an hour.
Okay.
For warranty.
It's just they had it listed, and the other guys did.
Yeah, there's also a correction on Stoltz Telecom. There was a confusion about their total bid. There's a personal comfort system that comes with the system, and we thought that was an addition, an extra on their bid. They just sent me an email as I was sitting here saying it was actually included, so their total cost with options rather than being 110, 64674, would actually be $97,148.51, which still puts them higher than ZYBEX.
Right. Who do we use now on that equipment? Do we have somebody that we've used in the past? Are we happy with them? Anybody?
We don't really have dispatch consoles, they're just kind of some desks that we use and.
Yeah, it's kind of old-timey, put together one-at-a-time deals.
Yeah, so these are ergonomic consoles that will go to sit-to-stand positions, and they're, they're actually for a dispatch environment.
Okay, so that's your recommendation, is X?
ZYBEX.
I don't, ZYBEX?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve it.
All right, thanks.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? Would you call for the vote, please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number seven is consider awarding bid number 1314-0, oh, excuse me. Item number eight is discussion regarding traffic design of the south 19th and Tower Drive and the Broadway and Eastern intersections. I had put this on there because these are crazy intersections, especially the one on Broadway and Eastern that goes in an angle, and that street, we've patched it, I don't know how many times we've patched it a year, probably at least every other month, and I think it's time to look at maybe putting some cement down instead of asphalt because of the big trucks that use it right there, and they turn that corner pretty sharp, so when they turn that corner, they kind of dig in, and it keeps causing wrecks.
Well, and aren't we going to eventually be putting a park tennis courts over in that area?
At some point.
Was that part of that?
That, plus, at that angle, when the lights are green, you take your life in your hands, because some people are turning, don't signal, and some people do turn. We had an accident down there just last week. So it's like, we need to have kind of the signals that we put at Broadway and Tower right there, where you get a left-turn lane for a few minutes, then it turns back, and the other guys can go. So maybe we can do something like that. It doesn't have to be expensive, but the light definitely needs to be fixed there. I would like to fix the road, too, but I don't know if we have the money to do it or not.
We, we can look at some temporary improvements down there. I think we may even have some traffic signals at the yard that we could use, I don't know, but the better fix for this, or the longer-term fix, is to go ahead and initiate an ACOG STP project on this from 19th and Tower there, at 19th, down to, at least down to Eastern, if not on down to 34th. Elizabeth has done some work on that in terms of the number of parcels of right-of-way we would need and all that, and it'd be a good while before we could ever get a project off the ground. We're talking lots of parcels of right-of-way.
There are significant, more than we've probably normally dealt with, and the parcels that there are there, especially at the actual intersection of 19th and Broadway, have buildings on them, which would be much more expensive than we've ever experienced before. But I was going to say that we actually, if you recall back about a year ago or so, we, we came up with a list of future projects for consideration, and this body passed them, and these, these streets were actually on those projects. And so we had Telephone Road as number one, we had Southwest 34th Street as number two, and then these two portions of Broadway. And so we are doing Telephone Road, and we're in the process of design on 34th Street, so actually the time is right to get started on these. The mayor has timed it correctly in that we, we can get started on them. It will probably take, depending on how aggressive the city wants to be, about a timeline, anywhere from one to two years for an ACOG project, but considering the cost, you know, it may take that long. Time depends on what your preferences are.
I think we want to do an ACOG project to, to actually do the cement work and all that and get it right, but in the meantime, I think, because it's going to take probably two to three years, we always say it takes, you know, government, a 30-day project is, is two years. But I, I think at some point, we need to look at those lights, and if nothing else, just use the lights that we have and time them where one side goes and the other side goes. You may have to stop there a little bit longer if you're going on Broadway, but at some point, we're going to have to do that, because it's just become too dangerous because there's too much traffic on it.
Well, you know, and we did do the left turn there on, on, from 19th on to Tower, which did tremendously help, but the traffic has just continued to get more and more and more. Now we got a strip sander being built there.
Yeah.
So it's just going to get worse.
Both of those. We need to get them on the ACOG list, because we know it takes a lot to get fixed. And those are expensive projects, because they need to be cement instead of asphalt, because that's where the big trucks turn. So, anyway.
Well, I was.
I just threw it out there.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, and I would love to see the, the city come up with some ideas or, as to what we could do and where it might fit in our priorities, which Elizabeth just kind of outlined for us, but, you know, I guess get it on the ACOG list and just start.
I just want to put it kind of on a long-term start for the ACOG project, but at the same time, I'd like to see if we got, like I said, stoplights or whatever we can do over there. Because I don't think it has to be that expensive a fix just for the stoplight itself, but I know the ACOG project has a, that is a big deal to tear up that lot right there.
Have you all, I know, I kind of hate to say this, but turnabouts, that intersection there at Broadway, let's see, what is that, Broadway and? Eastern. Eastern. I mean, if we were ever going to do one, that may be the place to, that's not the quick fix.
You'd still have to have even more land then to do that.
Yeah.
So that's pretty pricey right there. I don't know, we can sure look at it, don't we?
Well, I, I would love to just look at, look at the options and not give people just busy work, but let's just look at it all, and, and, you know, I think it needs to be four lanes versus, you know, I think it goes to three and then shrinks down to two and. It probably needs to be at least four, and may even need to be five lanes up and down through there, because that obviously is a major arterial way down there. And a lot of turning movements up and down through there, particularly the truck traffic, so.
You're talking about Broadway, south of 19th?
Broadway, south of 19th, yeah. We probably should just begin to work at looking with some engineers at, at potential design work as far as submittal of an ACOG project. And we can do that, basically at this point, with no cost, right now, until we begin to hire engineers. The other part, we can definitely have our traffic signal people out that just do the work for us. What's the name of the company Stan we use, traffic signals?
AC.
Well, but the company that does the work in the field.
Oh, traffic and lighting, isn't that why, Richard?
Yeah. They may be able to give us some ideas as far as how to work with what we have out there currently, just to make that a little bit safer.
I don't think we have the capability of alternating those turn movements there, but we can look at what we have. We have some signal lights at the yard, Richard. We'll look at our inventory and see if it's feasible.
May have to have a controller or something like that, but.
We've had several wrecks down there in the last four years, and it's.
Another problem, the intersection, the drainage is.
Yeah, the drainage is in the middle of the road, so, yes, okay.
Could, and I know everybody's a traffic expert, and I'm not, but I have ideas. There at, on Broadway and 19th and Tower, but the traffic that's coming north on Broadway, turning onto 19th, right now, it's just one, there's, there's two lights coming, you could, and either, if you're going to turn back to the west, you have to be in that one, you can't do two cars. It's not a double turn lane. Is there a reason for, I'm sure that there is a reason for it. Is there something that that could be looked at to maybe allow more cars to turn, to go west onto 19th versus just having that one? You're talking about putting in a dual-left turn there as opposed to a single-left. We've, we've looked at that, haven't we, Stan?
Broadway, 19th?
Yeah.
That's on the?
No, north, northbound.
That's on our list.
Dual-left with the revised?
No, 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 the, the tower, northbound on, northbound on Broadway, Tower, you can only turn left on that inside lane. The other one is supposed to go straight through.
That's correct.
But we looked at double lefts there, didn't we, at one point? Dual lefts?
Right-of-way.
Right-of-way? Well, but just with the paving that's there now, though. We'll look at it, Mark.
Okay.
Because that, that's probably something that, that may be something that could be done, again, like we're talking about on the other intersection, just a temporary kind of a fix.
Right, okay. Yeah, I didn't need any action on this item, I can just put it on there in case you wanted to, but we just want to talk about it.
Yeah.
Put it out there, see what you guys thought, for discussion.
Great.
Okay. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting. Oh, what? Oh, I got an addendum, I'm sorry. Addendum 8-1 is discuss and consider authorizing the creation of an additional building inspector position in the community development department. And this isn't budgeted, but?
This is not budgeted, Mayor. This is something that we don't, we rarely do at a mid-year type of a thing, is look at a new position, but our circumstances in community development are such that I'm absolutely convinced that we need another inspector. We have three inspectors right now in, in, in building inspections, the main building official, and then two inspectors. We've had help from an inspector with the city of Midwest City now for a few, several weeks, and they're busting their butts to stay up, and they, they are, but they're not, haven't had any time off since the storm, and some things like that, and I'm concerned about that, but, but frankly, with everything that's on the horizon out there with some big projects that are going to be under construction in the next year or two, with what the city's doing, and with all the private sector work that's going to be done, I, I just believe at this point that we need to go ahead and see if we can hire another inspector. Hiring good qualified inspectors is not easy either, so we're going to have to work towards that, but that's, and Elizabeth can give you statistics and more information as far as the, the need, if you would like to hear that, but it, it's becoming a critical mass downstairs in, in community development.
Do we need somebody that's more into commercial or is it more into residential?
We need probably residential, and we need, well, ultimately, the inspectors are supposed to have certifications from the state in all the trade areas, and our inspectors work towards that. We will not be able to hire anybody that has state certifications in probably any of those areas, much less maybe one, but we need just somebody that will, can go out and do simple inspections now and learn their way up from the ground, is what we would do.
Do you need a motion on that?
We approve this additional position.
Second.
All right, thank you, thank you, both. We have a motion and a second. If there's, is there any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we will recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item nine is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held November 4th, 2013. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2013, 2014 in the amount of $590,00177.92.
Move to approve.
All right, thank you. Do we have?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. This time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item 10 is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held November 4th, 2013. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for 2013, 2014 in the amount of $145,826.94.
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote, please? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Terry?
Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Kraus. Jason Blair. Scott Singer.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here. Item 12 is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held October 21, 2013.
Move to approve.
Second. Would you call the roll, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes, item passes. This time, we'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council meeting.
All right, thank you. Item 13, I would like the record reflected, all the members that were present before are still here. Item 13 is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. We have one citizen signed up. Michael Atkinson.
Go ahead.
You were signed up.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Can I go ahead?
Yeah, sure.
This year, I had two shoulder surgeries. I worked for the city garage for almost eight years. The day I was supposed to come back, the week, I had a heart attack and was admitted to the Oklahoma R Hospital. I had open-heart surgery, had two valves in my heart replaced in my OR. While I was in the hospital, being gutted like a fish, I was terminated. My reason for termination was because I didn't call in for two days, and that's a bullface lie. My mom come up here and told them where I was at. Everybody knew where I was at. They cut my health insurance off right then and there. I made me completely wrong in this whole deal. I made me shoot from the hip here. Been less than a week before they cut my insurance off, I paid my health insurance premium. I don't know what to do, but how am I supposed to explain to my next employer that, how am I supposed to give them this letter saying I just didn't go to work? How bad's that going to look on me? Not to mention, I got paperwork from Kathy yesterday, today. In the Employee Health and Defense Plan of the City of Moore Public Works Authority, and this document says the date which employment terminates, cessation of active work in eligible class shall be deemed termination of employment unless the participant is being compensated for such absence using accrued sick leave, I used all my sick leave, and/or vacation, I used all my vacation, or is it on, or is it an approved leave of absence? I'm still being paid. I would think that I'd be on an approved leave of absence since I'm on short-term disability. I'll still get a paycheck this Thursday. I wouldn't consider that an approved leave of absence. Not only did they cut my health insurance off, they cut my children's insurance off. That's a lot of medical bills to pay. My mom had to go all the way from City Hall downtown, back to City Hall, just to get me on COBRA, just to cover me through this heart surgery. I could be wrong, like I said, I may be totally wrong in this, but I don't think it's right. Morally, it's not right. Morally, what I feel the city did to me is not right. They could have at least waited till I got out of the hospital and said, hey, you know what? Got a phone call. Nobody called me. Nobody come up and seen me. And I just figured I'd come up here because somebody used to know about this. This is not right.
Well, I appreciate that.
And most of all, I want this termination letter. Whether one hand is shit in the oven, I don't know, but most of all, I want this termination letter to reflect that I was in the hospital, being cut, open, and having my heart worked on, because that's a bullface lie. Everybody in the city knew where I was at, and it's not like I tried to milk every last dime of my time out. God knows, I called Richard, I don't know how many times, saying, hey, is there any light-duty work I can do? What can I do to get back to work? Now I'm out of a job, I'm out of health insurance, the only thing I got to live on right now is my savings.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm sorry, you know, you're going through that. Unfortunately, on the council, we don't deal in personnel. That's why we have a city manager form of government, and he's the guy you have to talk to, and he's the other guy you have to talk to, the city attorney. There is a process to go back about getting your job back.
I just think that's...
I don't know where that's at in the process, because I don't get involved in that part of it.
Hey, if the city don't want me working for them, I don't want to be here. I just think they should at least pay me on COBRA, that I had to come out of pocket on it, and at least reinstate my insurance for a month.
Okay.
So I can get through this cardiac rehab.
But what I'm saying is, these are the two guys you have to deal with.
I understand. And I think...
I appreciate you bringing it to us and letting us know this, because this is something that needs to be known and addressed, and we will. But we have to do it after you've gone through your process, and that's unfortunate, but that's just the way it has to be because of our charter. So I'm telling you, you know, we're looking to it, but...
City Attorney and Stevie D know about it now. Unless you guess that's what an entity...
All right, there is a process you can go through. You can do an appeal, and it is through, we have a board.
Personnel board.
Personnel board.
Okay.
I would suggest that.
Appreciate you saying that.
All right, thank you, sir.
Just a comment. Obviously, we can't talk about personnel issues up here anyway.
Right.
Even if we were a different form of government, but I do have some concerns on a couple things that was said there, so I wouldn't mind having somebody look in a little closer to that with that health insurance issue. Something just doesn't jive with that. So I appreciate that.
Well, not only that, if I'm, sorry, if I'm still on short-term disability, get a paycheck from the City of Moore, I would think that they would be taking my health insurance, not my check, and they just quit, same...
That's part of what I'm saying, is something doesn't seem quite right there. You know, we can't openly discuss specific instances, but that bothers me.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any items from the city council or trustees?
I just had an opportunity to go to the National League of City Conference, attended a lot of great sessions, learned a lot of good things, hopefully be helpful in our city government and help me be a better city council person. One interesting thing, they had a session about trains, communities with trains and issues, and it was full, and this is people from all over the country, and somebody from Amtrak was there, and the reoccurring, the whistle, the sound, and Amtrak's response was, well, you can just close the intersection, and the trains won't blow their whistles. So I guess we could just close 4th Street and Main Street and 12th Street, and they won't sound the whistle. But that's not an option. But there's just a lot of good stuff there. Had an opportunity to attend a session about youth commissions, and it's something I think that our city, we should look at, involving our young people and our government here. So I'm gathering information, and we'll bring some of that to you guys and see if it's something we might be interested in doing. But it was a great time and learned a lot, and that's all that I have.
All right. Any thoughts? Any items from the city manager or trust manager?
Couple of things, Mayor. First, the October financial statement there is for you all to look at. The good news is that the MPWA is making some incremental improvements, so there's still not good, but better than what it was, and the better news is that the general fund is very strong, so we're appreciative of that. I did send out an email to you all today with a bunch of stuff in it, but one of the things it talked about is showing you some of the monies, that partial monies, the category A money, that we're going to be out on our share of those funds, which was close to a million dollars, so that's not included in the 3.8, so you could look at 2.8 there if you wanted to. But without having been said, it's there, and we're fortunate that it is, that we're going to be able to cover the costs. We still have issues with streets and sidewalks and this and that that we'll need to deal with in the future, but basically, that's all I'll say about that. Second thing is, watching television yesterday with the pictures of the storms in Illinois just was awful and brought back a lot of things we've gone through time and again, but just wanted to say that our condolences and best wishes to those people in Illinois that went through what we went through. I interviewed one of the television stations today and basically said to them, believe it or not, it will get better, but you'll go through some tough times before it gets better. And then I wanted to also just get your concurrence with, I want to close City Hall on Christmas Eve. Under our normal conditions, Christmas Eve is not a day off, but I really think that our employees deserve it this year. It's kind of an odd deal this year, because Christmas Eve is on Tuesday and Christmas Day is on Wednesday, so we would be open on Monday, but close Tuesday and Wednesday in the middle of the week, so unless anybody has a tremendously big problem about that, we will do that.
Sounds good. Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you.
Everybody's worked really hard.
They have. Our employees have been, troopers have been tremendous.
Some days you get up in six months, seems like three years. Some days you get up six months.
Seems like yesterday, yeah. That's absolutely true.
So it depends on the day.
And I haven't been able to personally thank every employee yet, some, and sometime, I've had an opportunity or two in groups, but I wanted them to know that I know you all, and I do appreciate the work that they have done and that they will do, so.
Absolutely. Okay, item 14 is adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Would you please call for the vote? There's no discussion.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.